From Kern Government Television, welcome to this week's Kern County Board of Supervisors meeting. Originating from the county administrative center located at 1115 Truxton Avenue in Bakersfield, California, grounded in ideas, energy, and innovation, Kern County's vision is to be a driving force for the world's fifth-largest economy. And our mission is to exceed expectations of the communities we serve, changing the way they feel about government, those who manage it, and the services it provides. Today's Kern County Board of Supervisors meeting will convene momentarily.
Okay, Board to reconvene. Good morning, Kern County, and observers from lands afar off. This is the Tuesday regular meeting, March 11. The Kern County Board of Supervisors, and we will begin with my dear friend Kathy Kraus. Rule call. Supervisor Peters.
Here.
Supervisor Parlier.
Here.
Supervisor Flores.
Here.
Supervisor Couch.
Here.
Supervisor Perez. Here, and thank you. Our salute to the flag this morning will be directed and guided by our beloved veteran, Joe Reese, who served from 1961 to 1965 in the U.S. Navy. You're a young man then.
Way back.
Way back. Mr. Reese was part of the second group of trainees for BUDs, now more commonly known as Navy SEALs. Served two tours in Vietnam, in '64 and '65. Mr. Reese has called Bakersfield home for much of his adult life. Excuse me. Happily married and retired. Mr. Reese was an automotive mechanical instructor both in the public school system and for the California Department of Corrections. Mr. Reese spends much of his time as an active member of the F O E Eagles Club, Fraternal Order of Eagles, where he leads a veterans group on Tuesday evenings as they discuss common topics and otherwise share camaraderie. At the completion of our salute to the flag, would you please remain standing for a moment of silence, prayer, meditation, whatever you prefer. Mr. Reese, God bless you and thank you for your service.
Thank you. Salute, pledge.
Our pledge, allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Reese. We're going to move to everyone's favorite part of Tuesday morning, Kathy, which is our pet of the week. So I'm going to ask our director, Nick Cullen, to come on out with this precious furry baby who's ready to give unconditional love, loyalty, and will make you proud with all of their good behavior, right? Look at you, precious baby. Who do we have here?
Madam Chair, members of the board, this is Paco.
Paco.
Paco is a small breed dog. He's probably some Chihuahua and maybe a half a dozen other breeds, but he's a sweet boy. He's only about two years old. He's available for adoption right now at the Kern County Animal Shield.
Will he get much bigger than this?
Not at all. This is pretty much it.
What are the costs out of the door to adopt?
So right now, our adoption fees are just $20, and that includes the spay neuter, all the vaccines, and license for a year. Everything you need to be a responsible pet owner.
Easily $500 to $1,000 of services. You too can have a Paco. Best of luck to you, little guy. Thank you. We're going to move to the consent agenda. For those wishing to follow along, their agendas are at the back of the room at the tables. The items listed with a capital C, capital A, are considered by staff and county family to be routine and non-controversial, but if a member of the public feels otherwise, we want to hear from you, and now is the time to do so. I'm going to list the consent matters. They begin on page two, and they include items two through three and six through seven. On page three, items 10 through 17, all items listed. On page four, items 18 to 25, all items listed. On page five, 26 through 28 and 30 through 33. On page six, items 34 through 41. On page seven, items 42 to 47, plus item 49. On page eight, items 50 to 56, all items listed. Page nine, all items listed, 57 to 63. On page 10, item 65 will be withdrawn by the department, may be introduced at a later time. So otherwise, all items listed, 64 to 69, with 65 withdrawn. And that brings us to the end of our consent agenda. Let's see here. Is that right? Okay. So are there any members of the public who do not see a consent matters routine and non-controversial and want to comment on something? Now would be the time to do so. Good morning, Dennis.
Good morning, Dennis McLean. I had one item, number 47. Wonder if we could get the chief up here just to give us an explanation on what the use of the helicopters is, whether it's going to be for firefighting or medical emergencies or just something brief.
Great question. Thank you. Do we have the fire chief here or somebody who can, please, come on down? And then, ma'am, why don't you make your way to while the chief is coming down? Come on down. We want to hear from you. Please state your name. Good morning and welcome.
Good morning. I'm not contagious, so just get that out of the way. Number 29, if I wanted to speak on that, it's in the agenda, but it's not on the consent agenda.
Okay, so our 29 is going to, we're going to handle that in the regular order, so you'll come up at that time, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Chief, it's nice to see you. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chairman and members of the board. Chief Denise O'Mitchell with Kern County Fire Department to comment on that. We are purchasing those two helicopters of type one Firehawks. Those are for firefighting efforts to help supplement our program, which and then also with the new recent purchase we had, aircraft 409, that's going to be the part for the hoist rescue stuff like that. So the two Fox for firefighting, type one Firehawks firefighting efforts. And those will give us an abundance of availability to have aircraft available for every day while doing dual missions for hoist and fire rescue.
In Kern County, so diverse in its topography, 8100 square miles, third-largest county out of 58 in the state, really complex fire needs, complex first responder needs. Dennis, did you hear, I saw you nodding while the information was coming out. I hope that was pleasing to you. We can add that to our list of tours. Let's go take a look at that machinery and, you know, put your eyes on it, and you might get inspired, Dennis.
Take him on a flight.
Right?
Go on the flight.
Thank you. I love that. Great idea. Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Dennis. Okay. Seeing no other matters on consent that we will receive input on, I'm going to close the public session and ask my colleagues for action.
Motion on consent.
Thank you, David. We have a motion. A second, please cast your votes.
The motion is approved, all eyes.
Okay, moving right along to resolutions and proclamations. Again, the agendas are in the back of the room, and we're following along that path. So item number one is a resolution honoring Russell Steams, Auditor Controller's Office, upon his retirement with 36 years of dedicated service to the county of Kern. Thirty-six years. Supervisor Couch?
Motion on the resolution.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, and an applause, which is nice. So please cast your votes.
Who made the second? I'm sorry.
Supervisor Peters.
Okay.
Please cast your votes, colleagues.
The motion is approved, all eyes.
When you do 36 years, they put you at the top of the agenda. You earned it. Took you a while, but you got there. It's my honor today to present the Board of Supervisors resolution to Russell Sterns, and I'm going to read the proclamation, or excuse me, the resolution into the record, and then I'll turn it over to Amy, who probably has some comments she wants to make about Russell. Okay. It reads, "Whereas Russell Sterns began his career with Kern County Auditor Controller's Office on February 21, 1989 as an accountant, over the years, he successfully advanced through the accountant classification, as was promoted to accountant two and later to accountant three in March 1996. While working at the Auditor Controller's Office, he obtained his CPA Certified Public Accountant License. Russell Sterns was part of a team that compiled the comprehensive annual financial report, which earned Kern County its first certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting for the fiscal year ended June 30, 1997, awarded by the Government Finance Officers Association. And on October 20, 2003, Russell Sterns transferred to the Waste Management Department, where he served for the next 12 years as the primary department contact for CPA firms conducting audits of the Solid Waste Enterprise Fund, the Kern Sanitation Authority, and the Ford City Taft Heights Sanitation District. The Waste Management Department became part of the Public Works Department in July 2015, and as a result of that reorganization, Mr. Sterns became the department's contact for CPA firms performing the audits of approximately 130 county service areas, or CSAs as we like to call them. On May 31, 2023, Russell returned to the Auditor Controller's Office and was promoted to Auditor Controller Senior Accountants in the Audit and Reporting Division. Mr. Sterns assisted with the preparation of the June 30, 2023 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report and helped with various audits. Throughout his career, Russell Sterns has maintained the highest ethical standards and integrity has been a foundation of his work. Over the years, he has generously shared his extensive knowledge of government accounting with both new and experienced accountants. His commitment to helping others grow has and will continue on through those he has mentored over the years. Russell Sterns' unwavering dedication to the departments he served during his tenure has earned him the respect and admiration of his peers and colleagues. His significant contributions to Kern County are deeply appreciated, and he has obviously wished the very best in his future endeavors." And it concludes with this. "Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of the County of Kern, State of California, does hereby honor and commend Russell Sterns upon his retirement with 36 years of dedicated service to the county of Kern." And Russell, not that this means anything, but it's signed by all the members of the Board of Supervisors. You can scratch out whoever you don't like. So I'll present this to you, and I'm going to ask Amy if she wants to say a few words.
Morning, Amy.
Good morning. I'm committed, but 36 years, that's a lot. That's impressive. Throughout his career, Russ has played a vital role in ensuring the responsible accounting of taxpayer funds, upholding transparency, and fostering trust between our county government and the citizens we serve. His expertise in auditing, governmental accounting, financial transparency, and compliance has helped the county in its commitments to enhance the quality of life for all Kern County residents and to be a model of excellence in managing our business and workforce. He understands that behind every budget report and financial statement, there are real people, Kern County citizens, our neighbors, relying on government programs, infrastructure, and services. His work was never just about numbers, but about making a difference in the lives of the people he served. This includes his commitment to training and mentoring his fellow county accountants. In fact, Russ was one of the first people who trained me in governmental accounting nearly 20 years ago. Russ, did you know then that you were training the future auditor controller? While we did not work side by side most of my career, he was someone I knew I could call to bounce an idea off of or pick his brain for historical information. Russ also trained another county employee you may all be familiar with, our Assistant County Administrative Officer, Elsa Martinez. I have some comments from her that I would like to share now. Russ is someone that not only dedicated years of service to Kern County, but has also made a profound impact in the careers of many at the county. He has been an incredible mentor who has shaped the careers and helped many of our fiscal staff grow. I still vividly remember the day Russ had to explain governmental accounting to me. That was a big task. He not only taught me the technical skills required for the job, but also modeled what it meant to be a professional. His patience, encouragement, and commitment to excellence made it possible for me and countless others to learn and improve our skills that afforded us the opportunity to promote and help the residents of our community. Russ, as you step into the next chapter, we not only celebrate your professional achievements, but also your kindness and your patience. You leave behind a legacy of well-trained leaders serving the county. Thank you for being a teacher, a mentor, and most importantly, a friend. Congratulations on 36 impactful years, and I know I'm speaking for many, as I wish you a very well-deserved and fulfilling retirement.
Thank you for those kind words.
Wow.
I really appreciate receiving the resolution, and I want to thank the auditor controller for giving me the opportunity to start my career with county and then now to end my career with the county. Also want to thank Waste Management and Public Works for the time I got to spend with them. I've witnessed many changes over the years with the county. One of them, I'll just mention a few. One of them was that this building that we're in today did not exist when I started with the county. We were housed in the building on the corner of Truxton and Chester, which was then called the Administration and Courts Building. And then a few years later, this building was built and we moved into it. Another big change was when I started, we did our work with mechanical pencils and accounting paper. And we had eight auditors that shared one computer, which was mainly used, I think, more as a word processor than anything else. But now, of course, all of us have our own computer. And another change was just after the turn of the century, we implemented a new reporting model for the county's financial statements. And the big change was a new component that is called the government-wide financial statements. And now the county is attempting to make one more big change, and that is to replace our accounting system, which we call FMS, Financial Management System, which we've had during my entire career. And we've tried to replace it a couple times without success, and now we're trying once again. And I think we can see the light at the end of the tunnel on this one.
Are you still working?
Yeah.
Perfect. The perfect exit speech for an accountant. It's just perfect. Please keep going. We have all morning. Teach me.
Thank you. Well, I think I'm about done. Anyway, I've had many coworkers over all these 36 years, both at the Auditor Controller's Office and at Public Works, and I want to thank all of them for their help and their kindness through the years. Thank you.
I want to thank Supervisor Couch and Amy for a really excellent presentation. Just excellent. That really felt good. Miss... It's like the paparazzi. We got our own fame. We got our own fame. Mr. Sterns, I've seen a lot of these, and I've done a lot of them. That was really special, and thank you for continuing to work well into your retirement here today. We're gonna look at your comments very closely, make sure that we're, you know, giving them due. I loved your comments about how you learned to do the work, because, you know, we have become so overly reliant on technology, AI. These are really skills that we should be transferring and keeping with us, because we may end up going back to them, truth be told. You know, and so, you know, you're a special, you know, you represent transition, but also pillar and foundation for Kern County, which is really cool. And your heart is humble, and, you know, it looks like your family likes you. That's a good sign, you know. Best of luck to you in your retirement. We wish you the best. God bless you. We wish you the absolute best. Thank you for your service, sir. Okay, we're gonna move right along to item number four under Resolutions and Proclamations, which is proclaiming March 2025 as American Red Cross Month in Kern County, and this matter will be handled by Supervisor Jeff Flores.
Motion and item four.
Thank you.
And if Representatives of the Red Cross would come meet me at the podium.
We have a motion in a second. Please cast your votes.
The motion is approved. All eyes.
Good morning, everybody. It's a pleasure to present this proclamation on behalf of our board and chairman. This March, we celebrate American Red Cross Month by recognizing the compassionate acts of people in Kern County and by renewing our commitment to lend a helping hand to our neighbors. So when disaster strikes, the Red Cross, these people, these good Samaritans, they respond. Advancing this noble mission, the volunteers and supporters who now give back through the American Red Cross, Kern County and Eastern Sierra Chapter remain unwavering in their commitment to prevent and alleviate human suffering in the face of today's emergencies. And those emergencies are ever-present. You know, fires here in Kern County, fires to our neighbors, even flooding events, that once-in-a-hundred-year weather system, earthquakes, pandemic, you name it, these people hear the charge. Volunteers of the American Red Cross throughout Kern County and eastern Sierra regions readily respond to the needs of community. During the summer of 2024, the Borrell Fire burned areas surrounding the community of Lake Isabella. Red Cross volunteers responded immediately to the needs of the community, setting up safe, clean shelters in nearby Ridgecrest and Tehachapi, welcoming all families and neighbors displaced from their homes by the wildfires. So now therefore, resolved by our Chairman Letitia Perez and the Kern County Board of Supervisors, have declared vested in her the laws of Kern County, California, to hereby proclaim March 2025 as Red Cross Month, and we encourage all citizens of Kern County to reach out and support this humanitarian organization. So here's the proclamation, signed by our chairman and all our board members. Congratulations. If you'd like to say a few words, you're welcome to come up.
Thank you. Hector Vazquez is the Executive Director for the American Red Cross, and I'm joined by our two board members, Cindy Hughie and Carolyn Forster. Madam Chair and district members, thank you for this proclamation. It is an honor to serve with your local Red Cross in Kern County and to work alongside an incredible group of volunteers dedicated to aiding our communities. This past July, when the Borrell Fire devastated our county, our volunteers responded swiftly by opening three shelters in Lake Isabella, Tehachapi, and Ridgecrest. I deeply appreciate your support during that challenging time, especially the assistance provided by Captain Mitchell and his entire staff, CAL FIRE, the County Emergency Respond, everyone did amazing, and those helicopters were highly needed during that time. From wildfires to single-family home fires and everything in between, our committed volunteers, board members, and staff are always ready to answer the call. I invite each of you to join our family of volunteers with Red Cross. You can simply go to redcross.org/volunteer, and again, we thank you so much for everything you have to, for all your support.
Thank you. Thank you. I was recently contacted on Facebook direct message by Cindy of this crowd, so passionate, so grateful, so thankful to her volunteers, asking me to come out on a Saturday, meet them, say hello, and say thank you. This is a very special group of people that's in front of us today. I lost my, well, we lost our home for seven months, lived in four different places after a house fire, most disorienting, traumatic, stressful experience of my life, and the American Red Cross, they are more than assisters or helpers, but even that would be huge. There's really a heart and a love for people in trauma that you do so, with such a fine touch, that is just so human, so beautiful. I thank you for what you do, and it's nice to honor you today.
Madam Chair, can I say a couple words?
Please.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry.
I just wanted to echo some of those comments and say how appreciated you guys are. I got to work with Red Cross quite a bit. Usually whenever there's a, some kind of environmental or natural disaster, it's in District One, it seems like. But you guys, every time I answer the call, get out there as quick as you can. I know that after you stood up shelter, you had to close it down, move it again, not just taking care of the people up there, but their pets, their dogs, I mean, coordinating supplies and everything, it's a big job, but you guys do a great job at it, so thank you very much.
Well said, Supervisor Peters. Thank you Supervisor Flores for that excellent presentation. Thanks, Cindy. Keep up the good work. Number five under appointments this morning is an appointment of Tina Stout, qualified candidate, to the Kern County Hospital Authority Board of Governors to fill a community member-at-large vacancy term to expire June 30, 2027. Kathy Kraus, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Kern County Hospital Authority Board of Governors currently has a vacancy. The process for filling vacancies on this particular board is outlined in Chapter 2.170 of the Kern County Ordinance Code and requires a written ballot process. All applications received are reviewed by the Hospital Authority Board of Governors to verify that initial qualifications have been met by the candidate. Subsequently, your board received the hospital board's recommendation to appoint Tina Stout as a qualified candidate to fill the current vacancy. Kern County Hospital Authority Vice President and General Counsel Karen Barnes and applicant Tina Stout are in the audience if you would like to hear from either of them or from any member of the public before completing the ballot process, so it would be appropriate to call for public comment at this time.
Thank you so much. I'd like to hear from the applicant. Can you come down and tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're interested in serving in this capacity? We certainly appreciate your willingness to do so. These positions are harder to fill than you think. You gotta find people who do not have personal conflicts of interest, which on its own is really tough, if you have also an expertise in the business, so it is a real challenge. And I appreciate your willingness to step up and, you know, who are you and what should we think about you?
Well, thank you. My name is Tina Stout. I'm a native. I went to North High. I am an attorney in town, and I've been on the Fruitvale School Board for 35 years, and there was an opening at the hospital board, and so I was asked if I would apply. Even at this stage in my life, I'm older, I believe in giving back to the community and volunteering and doing what I can to help out, so, you know, I'm happy to be on the board and help with their business, so.
Well, it seems the kids at Fruitvale keep you young.
Thank you.
I feel it. Thank you. Any other members of the public like to comment at this time? Okay, Kathy, the public, close the public portion. What do we do next?
Well, Madam Chair, you have already turned in the ballots, so every board member has voted, and I have tabulated the ballots, and the ballot tabulation reflects that Tina Stout has received five votes, and having received a majority of the votes cast, Tina Stout is appointed as community member-at-large to the Kern County Hospital Authority Board of Governors, effective immediately, to fill a vacancy for a term expiring June 30, 2027. That completes this item.
Thank you. Congratulations, and don't disappoint us. I know you won't. Good luck, and thank you. We're watching. Okay, we are going to move to public presentations now. This is item number eight on the morning calendar. This is reserved for matters that are not on today's agenda, but they are within the jurisdiction or the power, authority, influence of the Board of Supervisors. So this would be the time. Please come forward. We do ask you to please be mindful, we do a two-minute time limit. It doesn't sound like a long time, but in my experience, pretty much everything you need to say can be said in two minutes, is my sense. So thank you. We are, you know, we're flexible when necessary, but we certainly appreciate the consideration from the public. Good morning and welcome.
Good morning. Good morning, Madam Chair Perez and Board of Supervisors. My name is Anne McBride, M-C-B-R-I-D-E, and I am a voter in the North Kern South-Tulare Hospital District. If you recall, I spoke to this board previously about a particular race in the November 2024 election. That race was the short-term board position for the North Kern South-Tulare Hospital Board. Although the race for the board seat of the Greenfield School District election received an enormous amount of attention, this race fell into the same category, yet it has hardly received any attention, either from this board or the press. The district crosses the county line and covers the Tulare County towns of Early Mart and Rich Growth. In Kern, it covers Delano, McFarland, and Wasco. The total population of these communities is over 100,000 people. You are asked to appoint a board seat today because a vacancy was declared for this board seat. It was not because somebody resigned, instead it was because the race was never certified. Why? Because the race never even appeared on the Tulare County ballot. The race only appeared on the Kern County ballot. As a Tulare County resident, I was not given the opportunity to vote in this race. Kern County was considered the primary county in this election, since it comprises the majority of the voters, or about 90%. It was the responsibility of the Kern County Elections Department to double-check and be assured that the minor county put the race on their ballot. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Good morning.
Madam Chair Perez and Board of Supervisors, my name is Tom Pavich, and I am the coordinator for both Kern and Tulare Counties for the Election Integrity Project California. I wish to pick up where Ms. McBride left off. The hospital district has evidence of written communication with the Tulare County Elections Department that states that the elections office was properly notified of the race and the qualified candidates in the race. Tulare County failed to include the race on its ballot, and Kern County failed to pick up the mistake. The candidate that won the majority of the votes in Kern County was appointed to the hospital board today. It is my understanding that the candidate that came in second did not desire to challenge this process. If that was the case, as a practical matter, it was appropriate to appoint the hospital board seat rather than conduct a new election at the expense of the two counties. The hospital board has been without a full board now for four months due to this election error. Citizens of the hospital district have not been properly represented. Unfortunately, this is not how our constitutional republic's election process is supposed to work. 10% of the voters, those in Tulare County, were disenfranchised and were not given the opportunity to vote in this race. Although the number of votes in Tulare County most likely would not have changed the outcome of the election, this sets a horrible precedent and may disillusion voters with respect to future elections. On behalf of the Election Integrity Project California, I respectfully request that this board consider opening an investigation into this matter and determine what went wrong and what policies and procedures need to be amended to assure that this does not happen again. Thank you.
Tom, thank you.
You're welcome.
Good morning, board.
Good morning. Good to see you, Jess.
I am Jeff Sanders. I'm here to address the public viewing area upgrades that we spoke about earlier, to make the observations areas for the election department more comfortable and inviting to the citizens. Concerned citizens look forward to recognizing the auditor controller, RV, and clerk for achieving these improvements. Nothing's been done yet, but we would like to know if the bill number that was put forward, do we have, do we know when the bill will pass, and do we know how quickly the county can move to make these, install or revamp the public viewing area? And can we receive a copy of the changes? These accommodations will increase a public comfort while observing, encourage more public participation, and help restore the trust of our elections and voting process. Appreciate your time.
Thank you, Jess.
Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Good morning to the board members. God bless America. My name is Charles Shin. I am a retired Marine and a concerned citizen. We have 37,000 registrations, inactive registrations, they're begging to be removed. We discussed this last year in August timeframe. Our ROV said that after the five November election, and now we have a special election right on the tail end of that, which is concluded also, that those folks could be removed. We're looking forward to expedite that situation. Our voter rolls are in a shocking state. We're willing to help our ROV. We're willing to do whatever it takes to clean up our voter rolls. We have people on the voter registration rolls that don't have a place of birth, that have phony birth dates, fraudulent birth dates, there's missing information. And I would just like to say that if anybody is empowered to raise taxes and impose regulations on anyone else in that given society, they better have all their registration information correct, because that's what happens when people are on the voter rolls and they're not adequately vetted. Some of the items that can be worked on are registration, folks in the registry that are on the NCOA, National Change of Address Registry. The ROV, once a person is in the registry, you can see where they live in another state or in another county. The ROV should contact the other county and see if that person is reregistered. If they have reregistered in another county or a state, they need to come off our voter rolls, they need to be canceled. And the other is incomplete registrations, which I just covered. Thank you very much.
Charles, do you have any sense of, we know that some of those birthdays are from old registrations where they all got a standard January 1, you know, 1900?
January 1, 1900.
Thank you. January 1, 1900. Is your sense that there's a chunk of those, you referenced the birth dates, phony birth dates? Do we believe there's a big number out there that also have mismatched birthdays, other than the January 1, 1900?
I believe there is. It's going to be harder to determine the other anomalies, because there's a section in the election code that gives the secretary, well, actually, it came from the Secretary of State. The Secretary of State says in a portion of the election code that if the ROV cannot read or there is no birth date on the registration, that they are to assume that person is 18 right before the oncoming election. So that would mean a 55-year-old gets out of prison, hasn't voted in hasn't voted in his entire life, leaves that blank, and he's going to be assumed on voter rolls to be 18 years old.
Okay.
And we've also seen there's 18-year-olds that are voting before their 18th birthday, and there's also people that are voting before their registration has made it to the registry.
Thank you, Charles. Appreciate you. Any other public comment? Good morning, Dennis.
Dennis McLean, M-C-L-E-A-N. Good morning, Madam Chair and Supervisors. Thank you for hearing my concerns. I'm speaking this morning on my voting experience from our last special election. I have resided in the same county residence for 47 years. My neighborhood, a county island in northwest Bakersfield, now has city housing to the south. We have lost our voting precinct since the pandemic fiasco and have been instructed to vote by mail. I will not participate in the vote-by-mail process because of its inherent deficiencies. After many trips to the Election Department to address my issue with no voting precinct, I opted to vote using the ICX Dominion voting machine. Since I am on the registered voter rolls, I can vote ICX at a poll site near my residence. My concern is, why is there no public information or transparency for voters who do not want to vote by mail? I still have concerns with the printed ballot from the ICX machine. I assume this single page is converted to a standard ballot format to be sent to the tabulator. On the ICX ballot is a QR code. I would like to know the purpose of that. After I voted, I was directed to place my ICX ballot in a nearby ballot box marked "Vote by mail and provisional ballots only." Not sure what that's all about. My concern is all these unsecure ways of voting and vote tallying are being pushed upon our county by the state. All I want are free and fair elections for our local citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis.
Glenn Clayton, C-L-A-Y-T-O-N. Good morning, District Members, Board, and Madam Chair. I would like to direct my discussion to the January 28, 2025 Board of Supervisors 9:00 AM public presentations. Amy Espinoza, Registrar of Voters, responded to the suggestions that were given to her from the Special Committee, made up of concerned citizens, Supervisor Couch, Supervisor Perez. Her presentation was helpful in helping us to understand issues such as mail-in ballot pickup, voter roll cleanup, birthday placeholder, and the signature cure period that can drag out to 28 days after the close of polls. Thank you very much, Ms. Espinoza. We want to thank Supervisor Couch for his pertinent and relevant questions. You may recall that Supervisor Couch asked Ms. Espinoza, "What are those things that need to be done that you would like to do? Is there anything that you, your department, could do that you know of to make this whole process better?" To which Ms. Espinoza replied, "We need more space. We could build out some specific areas for observers that would be out in the layout." Ms. Espinoza said that she would be concerned if the Elections Office was moved from this building because she's comfortable with the security metal detection equipment. She also would not want to break up the vote-by-mail process area. Supervisor Couch suggested that during an upcoming tour in the Election Office, Ms. Espinoza could show us what she was thinking. I believe that what we witnessed was a good dialogue, a problem-solving brainstorming, and a spirit of support and camaraderie. The focus of attention was on improving the services to the citizens of Kern County. We also want to validate Ms. Espinoza's request for more room. I want to add up one more idea as we consider the more room. In a most recent meeting of concerned citizens, some brought up the idea for the Elections Office to be mindful of our elderly, who find it uncomfortable to stand for long periods of time. So my question was, can anything be done to increase closer parking areas, minimizing the lengthy line? Concerned citizens learned that on the election day, there were 5,055 people that waited until the election day to register. And I was happy to learn that the Special Committee, and thank Supervisor Couch, that's working on a resolution on issues such as working conditional voter registration, voter ID. So we appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Glenn. You have a big fan, Supervisor Couch. Yeah, I see it too. It's always nice. Of course. Good morning.
Good morning.
Welcome.
Paul Luffel, L-O-E, Double F, and Frank E.L. I'm the, "Good morning, Madam Chairman, Board of Supervisors. I'm the Chief Financial Officer of Anthony Vineyards, Inc. I respectfully request an extra minute or two to be able to fully address a health and safety issue impacting the farmworkers of Kern County. On behalf of Anthony Vineyards and the five landowners and agricultural operators on Valprado Avenue between Wheeler Ridge and Highway 99, I am here to raise awareness of a health and safety issue concern for the farmworkers of Kern County arising from the use of Valprado Avenue by granite construction, gravel hauling trucks transiting to and from Highway 99 and their quarry in southeast Kern County. I wish to clarify that the fact that neither Anthony Vineyards nor the other five growers that submitted letters of concern are parties to any litigation involving granite or the Kern County. When Granite submitted their mining application over a decade ago to secure their conditional use permit, their proposed route did not include Valprado Avenue. Valprado Avenue is a narrow secondary blacktop without paved shoulders as compared to the proposed route, which had wider lanes with paved shoulders. Through viewing our security camera footage, there are now over 100 gravel hauling trucks most weeks transiting Valprado, and sometimes over 200 a week.
I'm sorry, so you said hundreds a week, or not a day?
Hundred a week.
Hundred a week.
And 200 per, sometimes up to 200 per week.
Got it. Thank you.
Many days of the year, thousands of workers utilize Valprado Avenue to get to and from work. The road is accessed also for many slow-moving tractors moving from field to field. Equally concerning are the school buses picking up and delivering home children, especially during the winter months associated with our great morning thule fog. When granite, especially in the mornings, is when this traffic is especially heavy. These trucks travel at excessive speeds and have been involved in many near misses with our workers and equipment. As good neighbors, we reached out to Granite directly in 2023 to raise our concerns. We only received back a dismissive email recommending we call the Highway Patrol. In late October of this past year, we submitted a letter to the Board to bring this issue to your attention. We only received back a letter from the Director of Planning and Natural Resources Department advising us nothing could be done, and again, suggesting we bring the issue to the California Highway Patrol. The five landowners and agricultural operators on Valprado Avenue, specifically Jamora Vineyards, Vignola Farms, Baco Country Sweet Potatoes, Sun Pacific Farming, and Richardson Farming, plus the Kern County Bureau, also sent the Board letters expressing their safety concerns with the granite trucks on Valprado. These companies account for about $2, nearly $2 billion of the $8 billion in sales of Kern County ag the largest agricultural producer in the United States of America. Granite, on February 11, submitted a letter to the Board in response to the Farm Bureau letter, signed by their District Vice President, which I quote, "Valprado Avenue is not part of any efficient path to access the Solari mine." Why did they not get their trucks and haulers back on the route they proposed in their CUP application years ago? At this point, we are frustrated and beyond exasperated that this safety issue for the farmworkers and citizens of Kern County has not been addressed and corrected. The county has a responsibility to enforce Granite's CUP on health and safety grounds. It is not if there will be a serious accident resulting in significant injury, but when. Thank you so much for your time and attention.
Sir, what was the original route in the CUP 10 years ago? What route was that?
That was down Sebastian Road, coming east on Sebastian, or west on Sebastian, south on Wheeler Ridge, and then proceeding west to David, on David Road, to the Access 99, David Copus Road exit point.
And that, in your opinion, is still inappropriate? From what you can tell, per the traffic study, is still inappropriate?
It's a much wider highway. It has paved shoulders. It is not a secondary blacktop such as Valprado. It's a much wider road.
Okay. Supervisor Flores.
Thank you. Mr. Luffel, I apologize that you have to take your time, your valuable time as a manager in ag and farming to come down here to plead your case, but it's come to that point. So thank you for coming and expressing your concerns. Thank you for giving us the context, the history of working through all the issues, of trying to be a good neighbor, of all the things that you highlighted. I'm sorry that you're dealing with sigma, water issues, potential tariff issues, wage issues, God knows what, to be successful. This is the last layer of complication we want to give you. So we're going to look into this. I'm going to look into it very keenly and try to come to amicable solution. We have a neighbor here that could use alternate routes that's choosing not to. I don't know why. I need more information. But I implore them to use a better route. So I'm sorry, but we're going to look into it. And CHP, they only do the traffic enforcement. And so they do traffic enforcement, but that's our road in the county system. And so my commitment to you and to our ag industry is to look into this, find a solution that works, and press, press, press until we get it the right, we get it the right way. Okay, sir?
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Thank you so much, Supervisor Flores. Supervisor Parlier.
Thank you, Paul. Paul, come back for a second. We've had at least two meetings regarding this issue, and I totally understand the frustration that you're experiencing. Besides what the county is facing, potential litigation, we're talking about other parties involved, broader farming issues with adjacent neighbors, and really, we're talking about a good neighbor issue. And it's going to be in closed session today. I don't know if we're going to come up with a resolution or not, but we're going to try and work hard for you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. I don't know that there's, outside of energy, it's a tough balance. I don't know that there's anything more important than growing food and being on the cutting edge in our land use policies, of which we have always been. We have the premier planning department in the nation, the premier planning director in the nation. I believe that. I stand by that. But the protection of, and the way in which we manage what is the most important, outside of water, the most important resource we could possibly be devoted to. I mean, this is a big deal. And I completely trust Supervisors Parlier and Flores to push this matter in a way that makes sense and complicated, because these are all-powerful, important interests. As you know, except the farmworkers, you gave them some lobbying credence today. But outside of that, you're dealing with very powerful interests that, you know, have their friends and have their levers as well that they can pull. So this is very important. I want you to know that. Please know that, and that we're going to work with you very closely. Hello and welcome.
Hi, Eric Richardson, E-R-I-C, R-I-C-H-A-R-D-S-O-N. I just want to piggyback on what Paul had to say and add a few details for myself. I'm the owner, half-owner of Richardson Farms, and we also farm off of Valprado. These trucks have been just crazy the last four or five years, and I would say it's to the point where we're just kind of scared. I think they all communicate with each other, so it seems to ramp up, up and up. More trucks, I would say double the amount of trucks that we had even two or three years ago are coming through now. One thing that I wanted to point out was that whenever there's something in the press, which there has been a little bit through the Californian, it will immediately stop the next day. You know, so that Granite is communicating with their truck drivers and have the ability to communicate with them, and it will pause for two or three days, maybe a week, and then a week goes by, no issues on their behalf, and then all of a sudden, the trucks just come roaring back down the road. You know, some statistics that we have, we have about 125 employees. The average person per car is three people that come to work for us, and I'm assuming Anthony's not a whole, you know, a lot different. And it's just terrifying to know that there's three to four or five people in each of these cars pulling in and out every day. There's a slight bend on the road, so it's hard to see both ways clearly. And these trucks, gosh, you know, I don't know exactly. We don't have a radar gun, but 70 miles an hour buzzing through. The dust on the side of the road's flying up. It's pretty wild at times. You know, I don't want to add a whole lot to what Paul's already talked about, but it's just like the risk-reward is crazy. I think they might save 15, 20 seconds on their route, and they're trying to make three or four of these routes a day, each truck driver. You know, and it puts tons of lives at risk, as far as we're concerned. So it's just wild on our end, watching it happen. We just don't really understand it. So thank you for having us today.
Thank you. Thank you for growing food. It's important. Supervisor Parlier.
Quick question for you before you run off. So the people you're talking about in the cars are your farmworkers, correct?
Yes.
Do you believe there's a clear and present danger to them with the truck traffic?
I absolutely believe that. I think there's, you know, on the farm roads in general, there's a lot of danger because they're not, you know, generally very wide. They leave early in the mornings. It's especially right now with the time change. It's dark out in the morning when they come to work. But this road specifically, it's constant traffic for, I mean, the grape season now is, you know, seven, eight months long, a lot longer than it used to be. So in addition with these trucks, it is a clear, clear danger. I mean, I don't, we haven't had any complaints in writing, but just talking with the guys and the girls in the shed and whatnot, we hear constantly, you know, they'll get ran off the road or whatever, and it's just scary.
So your farmworkers feel that there's an issue, correct?
100%, yeah.
Okay. And these trucks, I mean, it's coming from a mine. They're loaded with rock and, you know, gravel, so I imagine they can't stop really quick.
They can't stop really quick, and 95% of it is coming from the mine, not going to the mine. So of those 200 trucks Paul was referring to, you know, 190 of them are full. You know, there's only, say, you know, 10 going the other directions that aren't fully loaded at all times. So, yeah.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you again. Any other public comment for this morning? Hi, Amy. Good morning. Welcome back.
Good morning. I just wanted to share some information just really quickly based on some of the comments from this morning. And on February 12, we did run a job to cancel 29,711 voters. The 37,000 that has been referenced, that was prior to the November election. So if anyone voted during that election, then...
They came off that list.
Correct.
Okay.
So that was, again, February 12. Also, I wanted to just...
Thank you so much for that.
Of course. And then I just wanted to briefly mention the North Kern South Tulare. We've talked about voters being disenfranchised, and on one hand, it's not okay. And I feel like, on the other hand, maybe some think it is okay, and we should have certified. But as it was mentioned, we conducted the election correctly. We had it on the ballot. We shared that information with Tulare. Whatever happened on the Tulare side, they failed to add it to their ballot, which, as we know here in Kern, things happen, right? And so to put the entire issue of the North Kern South Tulare on my office and on your board, I don't think is right. Your board cannot speak for the Tulare Board, just as I can't speak for the Tulare... Your board cannot speak for the Tulare board, just as I can't speak for the Tulare registrar of voters. And so, I just did want to clarify that, which folks did mention that, you know, they clarified that it wasn't a Kern County issue, but they're asking us to certify, or at least saying we should have. Fortunately, we do follow the law, so it's not a matter of opinion, race by race. And so, we worked, it wasn't just my decision to not certify. We work with council always. We work with Secretary of State. We reach out to other counties, and we make sure that we are doing what we should be doing under the law to protect all voters and their right to vote. So, I just wanted to make those comments.
Supervisor Couch, are you punching it?
Yes, I am. Thank you.
Please.
This, this really isn't directed at you, Amy, but you might want to amplify it. I wanted, the first speaker this morning, ma'am, what was your name?
Anne McBride.
McBride.
Anne McBride. Well, I don't remember how you said it, but you, I think you basically said that the election of the North Kern South Tulare Cemetery District had received little, if any, attention from the board. Is that, is that close?
That's what it appeared.
Okay. Let me assure you, and I may assure my, my fellow board members that that is not the case.
I agree.
I spent a great deal of time on the phone, in person, with the chairman of the North Kern South Tulare Cemetery District, the, I don't know if they call him the executive director, the general manager, or what his exact title is, with our council, probably even, I don't remember this, but I probably even talked about it with the CAO. So, I would like to correct that, that I don't expect my colleagues to have spent that much time on it, because they've got other things to do and other problems in their own districts. That one, or that district is entirely within the fourth district, and I paid a great deal of attention to it. And I think we got about the best outcome as we could. I believe Ms. Sota, who was appointed on her consent calendar day, was the highest book getter by a lot. And I'm under, I think that's underestimating it by saying by a lot. So, congratulations to her, and I'm sorry that Tulare made a mistake. But specifically to Mr. Pavich's question, Amy, is there, and this is not to let anybody off the hook, we can always say, well, we can always do better, but is there a legal responsibility of your office to check and make sure that Tulare is doing something right?
Our legal requirement is to notify Tulare of folks who have come and filed papers as candidates.
Okay.
It is not our responsibility to check other counties' ballots. We have, as you saw, our ballots for the November election.
There's a lot on there.
Yes, and there's a reason. And so, we, each county is responsible for their own ballots.
Understood. All right. Thank you for that. Thank you, Chairman.
Supervisor Couch, again, I want to reiterate, it gives me great comfort knowing that you have, you have in the past and continue to put your brain specifically on these matters. I feel they're completely thoroughly analyzed to the degree that human beings can do with our limited resources and interests. I just, I feel that so strongly about Supervisor Couch. So, thank you, and really, thank you also for your, thank you for pushing and demanding more from your government. I think it's excellent. So, thank you. I know how much you care, Tom. I know who you're associated with and how serious you are about this. So, and Supervisor Couch, your devotion to the subject is unmatched. So, thank you. Any other public presentations at this time?
Good morning, members of the board. My name is Jenny Holtermann, H-O-L-T-E-R-M-A-N-N. I'm a fourth-generation farmer here in Kern County and president of the Kern County Farm Bureau. I stand before you today to speak to, on behalf of our Farm Bureau Board of Directors and our members of the agriculture community, whose safety and well-being are the utmost importance to all of us. We are here to address the urgent concerns that affect not only the farmworkers in our community, but also the employees of the nearby farms, some of which you just recently heard. That is the extreme safety risks posed by these truck traffic traveling along Val Prado Avenue. As you may have known and heard from these concerns raised by Anthony Vineyards, we feel it is necessary to further highlight these dangers to ensure that this matter is given the attention that it deserves. As a farmer myself, our employee's safety is always top of mind and the number-one concern for our daily jobs. Recently, the volume of truck traffic traveling on Val Prado Avenue has significantly increased, as you heard, and with that, so have the risks to those who work the land and travel those roads daily. This road is simply not equipped to handle the frequency and size of the trucks currently using it. Moreover, these trucks often travel at unsafe speeds and disregard posted speed limits, failing to yield to slower-moving farm equipment. As we all know, during certain times of year, these farm equipment move at slower paces, and they need a little patience and generosity. We've already seen troubling rise in near collisions between trucks and workers, and some of whom are traveling to and from our fields, putting everyone's safety at risk. So, we asked the board to reassess the current truck routes, impose necessary safety measures, and ensure that the safety of our farmworkers and our employees and all who travel along these roads are prioritized. So, thank you for your attention for this matter.
Thank you for your input, Farm Bureau. Very important, obviously. It really helps to contextualize the matter. As competing interests, you know, you don't always get a clear story, or the clearest that you can get, rather, as people are very vested in their position. So, thank you very much. Supervisor Parlier?
Jenny, for my own clarification...
Yeah. Jenny, for my own clarification, how many farmers do you represent, approximately?
The Kern County Farm Bureau represents about 500 agriculture businesses in Kern County.
And how much, in a dollar figure, how much would that be for the county, approximately?
Our agriculture value is about eight, over $8 billion annually.
Thank you so much, Jenny.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your time. Any other public input at this time? I'm sorry, Supervisor, excuse me. Supervisor Parlier, were you done? Okay. Supervisor Flores.
Thank you. Thank you, Jenny, for coming down. I think it means a lot to us to hear from the Farm Bureau officially, in your official capacity. Again, sorry that you're having to take time to come down here, but I also appreciate you coming down here, because this is elevated. We need to know about that. And as someone who used to work in mining, you know, mining gets a bad rap, and it gets a bad rap because certain actors in mining take shortcuts. So, it's unfortunate, because there's good mining practices and there's bad mining practices. And mining is just not the mine site. Mining is from, from pit to product to consumer, all points in between. So, if we don't get this fixed, I'm going to contact the IMSHA, National Mining Administration, Health Administration, who, who covers mines, and we're going to go up the chain of command and do whatever it takes to get their attention. So, thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Flores. Not seeing any more input from my, from my colleagues. I see that we have another public presentation. Mr. Turnipseed, good morning. Always good to see you.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Mike Turnipseed, representing the Kern County Taxpayers Association. In front of you, I have a printed article from the LA Times last week to address the issue of homeless service oversight. And this is about LA and what's going on down there, and a court-ordered productivity audit, and the findings that audit had about poorly-written contracts, no data, no following.
Same thing.
And what we're here today, since we're starting budget talks today, is that your board and jointly with the city of Bakersfield, and I'll go to their council meeting tomorrow, and say the same thing. You work together to do a productivity audit of our, all our homeless providers and vendors to see if they're actually, if our contracts are correct, if we're setting the proper outcomes, if we're getting the proper outcomes, and how our outcomes compare to what they should be by whatever norms are. And so, Kern Tax respectfully requests that you make a referral to the budget for this year to do a productivity audit of all vendors and everyone receiving holdless funds from the county to see that contracts were purposely written with, for purpose, and that they were followed correctly. Thank you very much for your time. Any questions?
Mike, you know, you remain a hero to me in this community, because there are very few people who will point to the fact that we have heard almost nothing, no feedback, we get no numbers, no reporting, we know nothing about how homelessness money is spent. We do know that the people running the homelessness programs will themselves never be homeless. They think they do quite well for themselves, surprisingly. And yet, we have a unending problem and no accountability. I thank you so much, Mike, for who you are and who you are for Kern County and your devotion to the taxpayer, which is consistent. And I myself also would like to see an accounting of how these dollars are spent and who, who is getting this money at what rate, and what is the taxpayer and the public getting for it? I think we're long overdue for this conversation, Mike. Thank you.
And this is not just homelessness. This is...
Thank you.
Two years, after three years of bugging the city, they did a productivity audit. They brought in Moss Adams and did a risk assessment two years ago. I don't know, I haven't had any follow-up reports yet, but at least they did it. Kern Health Systems, we just started a complete risk analysis of our entire organization because of all the turmoil that's going on in the Medicaid world and how we operate and make sure. And, and sometimes it's better to contract and bring in people to support, because changes so much. I mean, we have upgraded, I'm just talking about Kern Health Systems. We had the same accounting firm, and they did a fine, their accounting job, when they started in 1995. Well, Kern, Kern Health Systems has gone from a $800 million budget in 2019, uh, 2019 to $2.4 billion last year. And we have our 800 employees. And so, because of those concerns, we did bring in Moss Adams to be our new financial auditor. We brought in BDO. We're talking world-class players here to make sure our data is secure. Moss Adams has just started last month the risk analysis, and we are in the process of bringing in and recruiting outside general counsel to advise the board and work for the board to make sure that we're doing what we need to do. So, as the world is changing, we're just trying to keep up with it. So, thank you very much for your time.
Mike, thank you. I would like to make that referral. I see Supervisor Peters has clocked in, so Supervisor Peters, you go first.
Thank you. I, I'm happy for, for you to make that referral. I just, I wanted to make sure that it was made, just so that doesn't fall through the cracks and make sure that we have some type of, I don't know, independent or third-party that can come in and, and just take a look and make sure that we're getting a good return on our investment for taxpayer dollars. I know that this is an issue not just here, but throughout the country and especially throughout California. So, I appreciate Mr. Turnipseed bringing that forward, and I would like to hear a report back on that at some point in the future.
Supervisor Peters, thank you. I've made the motion, Supervisor Peters, had a second? Thank you so much, Supervisor Peters. We have a motion and a second. Please cast your votes.
The motion is approved. All ayes.
Thank you so very much. Thank you, Mike, and thank you so much to my colleagues. Okay, we're going to move right along. It looks like we're done with public presentations. We're going to move to a budget presentation to talk about the money we have.
Member comments.
Oh, yes. We'll get to that in a second. So, we're done with public comments. Do we have board member announcements or reports? Supervisor Flores.
Thank you. Busy morning, a lot going on. So, I want to take a time to introduce the North High Government Class comprised of some seniors. If you would stand and just wave your hands, welcome to the board chamber. These are some, these are some bright folks. This is government in action. Thanks for observing and participating. And they're also in dual enrollment, which means they're simultaneously getting college credit. Supervisor Perez, you know very well about dual enrollment. And Supervisor Peters. So, thank you and appreciate you, and when I lose hope in the future, it's renewed when I, when I see students like this. So, thank you for being here.
Jeff, thank you so much for having them here. I didn't do this in high school, and I really wish that I had. I actually waited till after college to get involved in even observing my own government. My, and I was well into, you know, my mid-20s before I really jumped in. You guys are way ahead of the game. Whatever you end up doing with your life, understanding, observing your government, how it works, how to, who to call, and just how the widgets go together is such a huge advantage for you, your personal life, your community, the profession that you're going to choose. And we up here, you know, we offer internships and opportunities for young people to get involved, and I really appreciate, Jeff, you know, your leadership in identifying. You guys are the future, and, you know, we're getting older, and it, it happens fast, but we want you to be prepared and to know and love Kern County the way that we do. You see, up here, we don't agree on everything. We have members of the public that are upset and want to see action occur, and we're working through that with the institutions that we have, you know, in the greatest system in the world, it truly is, I promise you. So, thank you for being here. Happy to have you. Okay, we're going to move to... Any board member, Supervisor Peters?
Thank you. I just wanted to welcome you all as well and tell you not to be put off on government just for having sat through this meeting. This is an important part, but it's the boring part. There's a lot of other good stuff that we get to do, lots of good ways to get to impact the community. So, if this is something you guys are interested in, I encourage you to move forward, reach out to any of us if there's any way we can help.
Thank you so much, Supervisor Peters. Okay, we're going to move from board member announcements or reports and get right to the official agenda. You're right, Jeff, it was a busy morning, but a good morning. So, here we are at item number 29, which is under the County Administrative Office, Fiscal Year 2025-26 Budget Development Report and Proposed General Fund Contribution Guideline. Elsa, thank you for your hard work and expertise. The floor is yours.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. I will try my best to make this presentation in English. I heard you loud and clear last board meeting. It is a complicated matter, but it's very important for our departments and our communities. So, we are beginning our annual budget process for fiscal year 25-26 by preparing a budget development report and the proposed net general fund contribution guideline for departments to follow as the budgets are prepared. And as a reminder, the net general, general fund contribution guideline is the allocation of discretionary funds, such as property tax, sales tax, to department operations to fulfill mandated programs and also some discretionary programs. This year, we have developed a financial forecast to identify issues on the horizon. Normally, we don't prepare this forecast until later in the budget process, but due to significant, significant fiscal uncertainty, we have included the document as part of the budget guideline. We are also including an overview of the fiscal issues from the state and federal side. And finally, we will be hearing your boards and the public's priorities for the next fiscal year. So, let me begin with a highlight of the big picture. We have managed our resources with prudence and have set aside ongoing resources to mitigate the fiscal year 25-26 deficit. We're enhancing services through measured K-funding, providing stable salary increases for employees, and minimizing several levels impacts for our community. Projections indicate the cost is outpacing revenue, with the anticipated deficit at $24.9 million in the general fund in fiscal year 25-26 and $19.6 million in the subsequent three years. But we're not alone. Other counties are facing similar, similar issues, and the governor's budget is balanced with $7 billion from the state's rainy day fund. State funding mandates continue to impact the county, and unpredictable federal funding further complicates our financial forecast. And while we're planning a status quo budget for next fiscal year, departments need to consider efficiencies and cost reductions for the coming fiscal years. So, what's the beginning of the budget process? The beginning of the budget process is approving the guideline for, guideline for fiscal year 25-26. As listed on the slide, there are multiple opportunities for the public to provide input in this process. After departments submit their requested budget to our office, we will be returning to your board and the public on June 24. We will be presenting the budget, the preliminary budget discussion for your board and the public. On July 28, we will have a special evening meeting in order to give the public the opportunity to provide input for, on the final year-end numbers, which include the final assessed value and, which will determine the property taxes, the final property taxes for the fiscal year. And I think the most important part of that meeting is that... is that we will be allocating unspent prior-year budget to departments. I think there have been a lot of comments from the public that we're just holding the money and not spending it. As a reminder, every year, I come to your board in June to allocate any unspent resources from the prior year to the following fiscal year. We do not hold money aside if there's not a specific purpose. And then again, the next day, we're going to present that, make that presentation again. And the final budget presentation is on August. Well, we will conclude budget hearings. And at each point, we will be updating the estimates and the expectation and the fiscal forecast for your board and the public. So how do we start our budget process? So when we begin the development of the budget, we evaluate state and federal actions. We review the county's assessed valuation, property taxes, and other discretionary revenue. We identify known and quantifiable changes in program costs and revenue. And then we check the status of the current year budget and year-end fund balance. But what's not included in this slide is the economic outlook. While it is normal after a change in federal administration to have changes in economic policy, the federal and California relationship has made the uncertainty to surge to new heights. And as I previously mentioned, in order to prepare, we have completed the financial forecast for the general fund at this point in the budget process. We normally develop it during the preliminary budget phase. However, as we develop the budget, it is important to understand the factors that will impact our decisions. Now I'm going to have Mr. Alex Alba, your budget director, give you a high-level overview of the general fund discretionary revenue.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. As Ms. Martinez mentioned, I'll be going over your general fund discretionary funding sources. For budget development purposes and after discussion with the assessor, an increase of 1.7% will be used to provide preliminary projections for next year's assessed valuation. Total assessed value for fiscal year 25-26 is projected at $129 billion. Regulatory measures and California's ambition to achieve carbon neutrality by 2045 have contributed to a decline in oil production. And as a result, property assessments for oil and gas properties are projected to decrease by 15% in fiscal year 25-26. 10 years ago, oil and gas averaged about 33% of total assessed value. In the last two years, it assessed at just 13%. And in 2025, it's estimated to only be 9% of our total assessed value. This significant decrease, however, is offset with a moderate 4% increase in our assessed value for residential and commercial property on the secured road. The net impact to the general fund from the projected overall change in value is total increase of $10 million from fiscal year 24-25. Our second-largest funding source for the general fund discretionary revenue is sales and use tax. Sales and use tax is a significant source of discretionary revenue. This graph shows the county's sales and taxes are collected primarily from business and industry and fuel and service stations. It is anticipated that the unprecedented rapid pace of growth of the prior fiscal years will slow in the coming months. Sales tax collections countywide excluding Measure K sales and use tax is estimated to decrease by 1.7 million due to the current economic conditions, which include inflation, high interest rate, higher consumer debt, and changes in consumer spending. Offsetting that decline, though, is the sales and use tax and the unincorporated collection from Measure K. This revenue is supporting 55.7 million of ongoing costs, including public safety, library services, and behavioral health services and economic development. Revenue for Measure K is anticipated to increase 5.5 million in fiscal year 25-26. The increase is primarily due to one-time energy property tax allocations and outstanding audit reallocations. Business and industry collections include one-time allocations due to the energy projects. However, those projects are one-time. The next source is other revenue, which makes up 56.8 million.
I'm sorry, I'm so sorry. I'm not in that, forgive me. Can I, when you said the 1.7 million reduction, do you mean in the sales and use tax specifically?
Madam Chair, yes.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
This final category of other revenue of discretionary is other revenue. The category includes interest earning on existing cash balances. We have conservatively budgeted interest earnings at approximately 13.5 million. Other revenue categories also include the countywide cost allocation plan, charges to federally and state-funded departments for costs associated with central departments such as county councils, general services, and information technology services. Lastly, this category includes funds from the redevelopment agency disillusions. RDAs were officially dissolved as of 2012. And as a result of the elimination of RDAs, property tax revenues are now being used to pay for required payments on existing bonds, other obligations that pass through payments to local governments. The remaining property tax revenues that exceed that enforceable obligations are allocated to cities, counties, and special districts. So the total increase to the general fund discretionary revenue as seen on this slide is 15.1 million total increase. $10 million in property-related revenue, $4 million in sales and other taxes, and 1.1 million in other revenue.
So we would, in another year, we would have the sales and other taxes be 5.7 million? It would be, that number would be included in there?
If I may, Madam Chair, to clarify, we have two sales tax. We have our regular sales tax that is collected, and then we have our Measure K. One is going down, one is going up. The net of the two is the 4 million, if that makes sense. And the reason is because outside the unincorporated area, if you look, go back to the previous graph, a lot of the Measure K revenue is not collected on, you know, when people go to the grocery store and buy things. It's really business and industry and fuel and service stations. So people are still putting gas and people are still, business and industry is still, you know, the activity is higher. When on the regular sales tax, it's more consumer-driven. So when budgets get tight, people spend less. So we're seeing a decline in one and an increase on the other. So the net of the two is the four, if that makes sense.
Got it. Thank you so much.
And this graph lists the major discretionary revenue growth that we just recently discussed. While we are projecting slow growth in discretionary revenue, we're not keeping pace with our costs. The increase there in '23-24 was from Measure K that Ms. Martinez just mentioned. It was the full collection in '23-24 of Measure K, but now that's starting to flatten out. And Ms. Martinez now will go over the cost factors affecting our budget.
Okay, so as I mentioned, we look at the costs, the non-quantifiable costs that are coming our way. So if you look at the bottom, you'll see retirement with pension obligation bonds going red negative. That means we have a reduction on our retirement costs. Last board meeting, you heard a presentation from our retirement association and their consultant that we had what they call an actuarial gain. So that means our retirement cost is going down, at least for one year. We still have, they still have about 89, I think it's 86 million of unallocated losses that they're going to face in the following year. So we're viewing this reduction on retirement for this year as a one-time event. And so we're using those savings to offset some of the cost increases that you see on that list. The first, one of the ones that are impacting our general fund is SB 525. That's a healthcare minimum wage. We have employees that not work on healthcare settings that have a higher minimum wage than the normal higher minimum wage. That impacts our public health department and our behavioral health department. The care of inmates continue to increase as the requirements coming from the state and disability rights advocates are constantly changing. So our psychiatric and medical unit at Lerdau will also be operational next fiscal year. And that requires some additional investment of over $5 million. And of course, employee costs for healthcare, workman's comp, and general liability continue to increase. And so these are some of the costs that the county has to pay that employees don't see on their paycheck. But that's a cost that exists. And we have negotiated salary increases for public safety of 3% of the incoming year that they're already negotiated and approved, so we need to factor those in. And one of the lines I have in there that I think is pretty relevant to what Mr. Turnipsey said about homelessness, we have programs funded with the American Rescue Act Plan. So as a reminder, the county received $175 million of American Rescue Act Plan. We have made significant investments one-time on parks, on roads. We actually provided a premium pay for our employees out of those funds. But we also funded programs that will either need to be funded with discretionary resources or eliminated. So I want to go over with your board on some of those programs. So, go ahead. But before I do that, I want to give you, this is in your package and it's a lot of numbers. But I think the important part is that at the top, it shows that revenue is not keeping pace with the anticipated costs. If you look at the first column, fiscal year 25-26, shows the revenue increase of $15 million that Mr. Alba mentioned, but it also shows the increase of costs of $25 million. So and as we move to the right, you can see that the trend does not change. Cost increases continue to outpace revenue growth. Each year, annual deficit will need to be mitigated through multi-year fiscal planners, which may include temporary use of reserves and/or cost reductions. For fiscal year 25-26, the net annual deficit is $9 million. And we believe departments will be able to absorb this with the reduction in retirement costs and other one-time operational reductions. So looking at the American Rescue Act Plan-funded programs, I think this is relevant because some of our programs that we are funding with ARPA, we call it ARPA, are programs that support homelessness. So the first one, some of the programs include the litter abatement, the Metro Bakersfield graffiti abatement, the rapid response team. And that team addresses outreach for homelessness individuals and also provides cleanup to homeless encampments. We have Safe Camping and Hope the Heart, which also provides significant support to address homelessness in our community. We have approximately 50 individuals in Safe Camping and another 50 individuals on Hope and Heart or Tiny Homes Village. We're providing services for that population. And then we are funding some of the, we are realizing ARPA and Measure K and even funding for the city of Bakersfield to maintain most of our libraries open five days a week and offer significant programming. So the deadline to use the ARPA funds is December 2026. However, we anticipate that some of the programs only have sufficient ARPA funding to get us through early 2026. So the next fiscal year, we're going to have to address that gap. So this is just an illustration of the numbers, the fiscal forecast that I presented to you. This shows that the revenue are not keeping pace with our escalating costs. And without long-term fiscal planners, this is not sustainable. So the impacts are not limited to just the general fund. I'm going to go have Mr. Senior Analyst Joseph Ariola go over the factors that affect other departments.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. The Kern County Administrative Office is also considering costs not listed in the general fund forecast. The costs listed on this slide either impact departments outside the general fund, have not been enacted, or are in early stages of implementation. County staff are reviewing over 2,500 bills introduced by the state legislature that could have fiscal and program impacts on county services. The staff report mentions a few of these, including one that will further impact the county's oil and gas industry. Likewise, uncertainty with the federal budget and proposed cuts to Medicaid, among other functional cuts, will have a significant implication on local programs and service delivery to our residents. The county of Kern receives over 525, sorry, 529 million annually from federal sources, either directly from federal agencies or indirectly through state allocations. These funds fund various programs, including public health, social services, workforce training, and child support. The county plays a key role in administering federal programs and services in our community. Having stable and reliable funding sources for many of these programs is critical to ensure residents receive services they rely on every day. Some of these cost increases from those programs are funded with sales and use tax-driven revenue that is subject to fluctuations. Proposition 172 and realignment funds are expected to remain relatively flat. Estimates from the governor's budget indicate that realignment funds are not projected to increase significantly for most programs in fiscal year 2025 through 2026. The Net General Fund Cost Guideline recommends budgets be kept at current year levels based on increases in discretionary revenue met by increases in cost. The guideline will provide departments with a framework to develop balanced budgets for the coming fiscal year. The annual budget kickoff meeting for departments, department heads and their staff are scheduled to begin this Thursday, March 13, to provide more detailed information on guidelines and clarity in budget development procedures.
So let me give you the takeaways for the, you know, report and the presentation. So as we begin this budget process, it is crucial to understand the key takeaways. It is the persistent uncertainty of the federal government that poses a significant challenge for county departments. The state mandated requirements will continue to place additional strain on county programs. And so in addressing the fiscal year 25-26 budget, we have made significant strides to mitigate the $24.9 million general fund deficit through one-time reductions in retirement costs. And while departments will have to absorb $9.8 million in additional expenses through a reduction in retirement and other cost-cutting measures, it is imperative that we recognize that moderate revenue growth is not keeping pace with escalating costs of salaries and benefits and other costs. This reality will necessitate that we use prudent use of one-time resources to bridge the gap in the future. And so by addressing decisions proactively, we can ensure financial stability and continued success of our county programs. I know this sounds like a grim report, but again, it is the beginning of our budget process. We're going to be updating your board as we move forward in this process. But we need to proactively ensure fiscal stability of our programs if we want to continue providing services for our community. So this will conclude our staff report. The recommended actions for your board is to hear this report, provide direction, and approve the general fund contribution guideline. We will be happy to answer questions at this time or if your board wishes to open public comment.
Well, I want to thank you for an incredibly thorough and user-friendly presentation. To everybody who presented today, this is excellent. Your use of graphs, you had dumbed them down for me, it looks like, and I appreciate it. This is simple and it is understandable in a way that I think is helpful to the public, but absolutely exceptional. Any comments, gentlemen, regarding the budget? Any members of the public would like to comment on the budget? Now would be the time to do so. Please come down and please give us your name and your thoughts.
My name's Karen Bessard.
Hi, Karen.
I'm sorry. I wrote a speech. Part of it was, thank you, Elsa, was regarding two weeks ago's, your presentation, that you could have done bars and graphs to make it more friendly.
I can't, we cannot hear you. If you wouldn't mind, we'd love it to be on the record.
Oh, I was thanking Elsa for making bars and graphs.
Thank you, it is very nice.
Yes. So I'm asking for grace because I don't feel good. And then, my name's Karen Bessard. I'm here as a legacy employee and taxpayer of Kern County. I'm not here to disrespect or begrudge any employee or bargaining unit for their contracts. I'm here to debunk the myth, aka propaganda perpetuated by the board and county admin office at the board meeting of February 25, 2025. The lack of respect and value shown to SEIU-represented employees was appalling. The statements made by the board and CAO were made to pit the public against this specific bargaining group. Is it because these employees are made up mostly of minorities, lower educated, blue collar, or don't carry a badge, gun, or hose? The only time we are loped together with other bargaining groups is when a presentation is done with regard to the county's budget. I'm going to skip the next paragraph. Let's start with retirement. Casera was established in 1945 under the county employees' [inaudible]. CASERA was established in 1945 under the county employees' retirement law of 1937. In November 72, general members were authorized to retire at age 50, and after 10 years of service, effective April 1st, 1973, a yearly 2% COLA was adopted for members. On July 1st, 1975, the county elected to pay a portion of health insurance premium for retirees under an insurance continuation plan. After July 1st, 1975, employee contributions were reduced by half in lieu of salary adjustments per bargaining negotiations. In July 1977, 1997, the county elected to play the, pay the employees' contributions on a sliding scale, which employee contributions were either 50 or 100%. After five years, the county paid for the employee contributions. The Ventura settlement added another 0.5% COLA, which increased retirement COLAs from 2% to 2.5%. In August 2004, general membership MOU, employees hired before August 7th, 2004, paid 100% of contributions until the employee was vested for five years. General paid 100% of their contributions. This did not affect safety members who had five years vested. July 1st, general membership tier one retirement scale went from 3 at 50 to 3 at 60. This did not affect the 3% at 50 for safety members. On October 7th, general membership tier two retirement scale was established, with retirement at 1.62% at 65. General members, regardless of when they were hired, paid 100% of their portion of the contributions. This did not affect the 3 at 50 for safety members. March 27, 2012, safety members tier two scale was established with retirement at 2 at 50. On July 1st, 2013, the California Public Employees Pension Reform Act of 2013, also known as PEPRA, came into effect, which is 2.5% at 67. So far, there's not been any effect on safety or general members of tier two status. July 30th, 2020, the Alameda decision was handed down affecting both general and safety tier one members. From January 1st, 2013, the decision excluded some pay types, standby, on-call pay, from being calculated toward retirement costs, which caused a reduction of retirement benefits for tier one employees. Again, retirement for safety is 3 at 50 or 2 at 50. General memberships, 3 at 60 or 1.62 at 65. With regard to the county's budget, as to the cost of county's proposal to SEIU represented employees, once again, around 3,000 employees represented bargaining groups cost over half a billion dollars compared to SEIU's around 5,000 employees of 36 million. After reviewing why such a half a billion dollar difference between the two costs, this is what I found. Ongoing equity judgments from '23 to '27 for said bargaining groups anywhere from 5% to 3%. This includes management. This is in addition to the COLAs that are negotiated. SEI employee equity adjustments for the same time period is zero. Longevity pay now starts at five years at 2.5%. SEIU employee longevity pay is still 10 years at 2%. The California Cost Price Index for California for years '23 and '24 is 3.5 and 3.9%, with a projected 3.9% for '25. The CPI affects the minimum wage increase. This is not only important when offering ongoing COLAs to all county employees, but is necessary when calculating SEIU represented employees' pay. This is because several classifications have positions that start at minimum wage. Example, the county gives a 2% COLA to all employees in July. However, in January, the following year, the minimum wage classifications have a salary adjustment to be in line with the required CPI. So those minimum wage employees get the 2% COLA, and then in July, in January, when it's appropriate, they get another increment raised, which you guys just voted on in January. The county having employees starting at minimum wage is embarrassing me, but what is my most concern is when you have an employee who has worked for the county for almost 25 years and makes less than a fast food worker. SEIU represented employees are the only bargaining group that is directly impacted by required COLAs for minimum wage workers. Have employees with food and housing insecurities. Are eligible for services the county provides, low-income housing, food stamps, daycare, along with other government programs, to the extent that the DHEI has a confidential caseload for county employees. Work overtime or a second job because they have to hopefully make ends meet, not because it's for extra spending money. Has little impact to the general fund, as most departments we work for have mixed funding from state, federal agencies, grants, general funding, and in some cases, 100% funding from state and federal agencies. And have to fight for every penny we receive while other groups are handing their money. The only budget crisis the county has is the crisis it created for me and my fellow coworkers. The Board approved proposals worth over half a billion dollars for other bargaining groups with around 3,000 members. SEIU employees, $36 million proposal. Again, I've, I've come to you several times about stuff. So just to see, just to show you that I'm doing my part, you know, I got this in the mail from PG&E, I decreased my cost by 16%. And then I got this notice of my rent increasing 8.76% for an amount of $120, which will leave me now $500 in the hole every month. I will be here for discussion if you guys have it. I will not be chanting my way out of here. So, thank you. And thank you for your presentation.
I have a different solution. Can we downsize?
Can you state your name for the right?
Dennis McLean, M-C-L-E-A-N. Can we downsize county government to reduce, so we don't have to be looking for money to reduce our debt, and outsource that to the private sector? I came from a contracting business for 40 years and survived, made a good living, and it was small, 12 employees. Federal government has grown, expenses have grown, county has grown. Can we look at maybe downsizing some things that can be efficient to the private sector? That's just my concern. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Other comments regarding the budget? Karen, thank you for your presentation. It's, I'm almost speechless, which is very rare for me. I wish I had something clever or helpful to say. I really don't, and that's embarrassing. And I am, once again, I feel a kind of anger and indignation towards the state of California that I don't even have words for, because I look at people like you, who I've met with in my office, who I've laughed with, who I've joked with, who's a neighbor of mine in this community. And I am, I feel devastated. You young people observing, the state of California is shutting us down, and that's the result, right there. It's very simple. It's very simple. They don't like oil. They have good reasons to have their opinions, I'm sure, and I don't, not interested in that debate. But the reality is Kern County is contingent, as you heard earlier, 33% of our discretionary revenue used to be from oil and gas. Next year, it'll be 9%. When David Couch and I joined the Board of Supervisors a dozen years ago, okay, within our tenure as supervisors, okay, the revenue is disappearing, because the politics around oil and gas are very tricky. I'm not in the oil and gas industry, and I'm not here to defend them necessarily. I'm here to defend the interests of Kern County, which is heavily reliant and dependent on our energy industry. And the state of California has said, no, you can't do that anymore. We don't like it, we don't really have an alternative or an answer, but please keep doing the renewables, because you make us look good for our renewable portfolio standard, but we're not going to give you anything for that, because of course, on your solar property, you can't get tax revenue, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And they won't issue us a permit to do what we do brilliantly better than anywhere in the country, and the cleanest extraction in the nation because of CEQA. And arguably, thank you so much, David Couch. I say that a lot, but I don't want to sound too exaggerated, but it is actually the cleanest system in the entire world because of CEQA exists right here in Kern County. Still not good enough. And here's what you have, an employee, a wonderful neighbor of ours, a person who I know and care about, okay, who's $500 in the hole now, and we've got 5,000 members of SEIU that when we make contributions to them, that's a big pool, totally worth it. I don't mean to devalue that, okay? I'm just stating, that is a lot of people to give what they deserve and what they work hard for, when we have dwindling revenue. That's our reality. Do you want to say something else, Karen?
I do. I think we have a respectful relationship to each other. And I understand why some of the stuff comes from you guys to the other people who present. It just, it hurts all the employees who aren't a part of that. And so we deal with the public every day, who are already mad, because there's a delay in services, there's a delay in the court process, roads are, you know, they got the tire blown out because of a pothole or whatever. But their anger comes to us, and not to you guys. If we, I used to work at probation, they didn't care if I was a probation officer or not. I worked at probation. The same with sheriff, we're in almost every department. So those myths that are set out, that are put out there, come back to us in the public. So hopefully, we can continue that respectful relationship. Thank you.
Appreciate you so much, Karen. You always have so much class, and I am so sorry. I am embarrassed, and I am so sorry. CAO, position one.
Madam Chair, if I may clarify something, you heard today a presentation from a gentleman that worked 36 years here. He trained me. I started entry level, represented employee. I hear you. There's never an intention to lump bargaining units or to put people against each other. We all work for the county. We all serve the community. There's a, there's a number in this figure that half a billion dollars for, for safety. I want to assure you, the salaries, if you go to the report, I actually listed out the salary increases, that the 3% that safety employees are getting, it is exactly the same that is we have proposed for other bargaining units. You are providing safety the same percentage to other bargaining units. The retirement presentation, I appreciate Ms. Bessard, she actually corrected me during the board meeting, because I misspoke of the retirement, the lower tier. She sent me an email, and I acknowledged that it is 1.62 at 65. I may have given a wrong number. But that was negotiated way before most of our times. I wasn't in this position. The facts are the facts. The presentation was never intended to put people against each other. Those are facts. I mean, the retirement cost is expensive. We are blessed that this year, we have a reduction. You heard me last time, maybe there's a light at the end of the tunnel, and we're going to have some resources. Our payment to CASERA is over 300 million a year. You couldn't imagine what we could do for this community, for our employees, if we have those resources available. But the reality is, promises were made, and we're going to keep them. We're going to ensure when employees retire, they have their retirement, and they can, you know, live a sustainable life here in our community, or wherever they choose to do it. So again, you are providing, it's not, it's not half a billion to any bargaining group. It is 3%. It is part of my presentation, it's part of the fiscal planning, it is listed out separately, because we want to be transparent, so everybody understands that we're not providing anything different to any bargaining group.
Okay, we're going to close the public portion of this hearing, Karen. So you, if you guys can talk later, email later, I think it would be really, really helpful. Thank you. Are there any other members of the public? I think we saw everyone. Okay, excellent. My colleagues, would you like to comment or provide action, please? Again, to the CAO, to the public, Karen, and others, thank you. Thank you for everything that you're doing.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Couch?
I'll make a motion on the staff's recommendation.
To receive and file?
To receive and file, and to approve the guideline. I don't know how much of this I should say, so I'm just going to say, I'm going to wade into it slowly, and you tell me where I ought to stop. We're in the middle of negotiations. We're actually not in the middle, we're sort of at the end, but there's, but the report you gave us today includes a successful negotiation to those negotiations.
Let me rephrase your question. If we have made an offer, we have set aside the funds to fulfill that offer.
If our offer is, it is net of our offer.
If our offers get accepted, all labor, all MOUs approve, or if there's an offer under place, we have set aside the funds to ensure that we can fulfill that, you know, that commitment that we have made. So the cost that I-
But there's, but there's red ink on the page.
There is red ink on the page this year, and there is red ink on the page for the following years, if, if something doesn't change. We know that revenue is declining. You heard, our oil and gas, 15%. It's hitting us. We're lucky enough that residential is growing, but it's going to slow down. I mean, at some point, people are not going to be able to afford by, you know, the selling of their houses at a higher price, which brings the values up. So at some point, it's going to slow down.
So I don't recall the year that we, I forgot what we called it. We had a structural deficit that we worked our way out of over about four years?
2016, when we had the significant decline in oil and gas, we had an over $50 million in one-year deficit that we had to address all the time.
So it's not, so put, put, put the situation today juxtaposed with where we were back then. The magnitude of it. It's not as bad as it was then. It's not good, but it's not like it was then.
Supervisor Couch, through the chair, you're correct. It's, we're in a similar situation, lower numbers. So what she is proposing is that we're going to use some one-time funds if necessary. We've got, if you've noticed on the, on the five-year forecast, we don't have a mitigation, a mitigation effort set yet for the out years, so '26, '27, and out. I think it was about $19 million that we're going to have to figure out or resolve to. And that, that's why she kept emphasizing the fiscal planning component. We do a five-year forecast that helps us plan for the out years. We have to do that when we're going to labor negotiations that are multi-year, and that becomes the challenge, is how we're going to ensure that we have sustainability going forward. So similar situation, just the, the dollar amounts are not as large as they were back in 2016.
But a similar exercise to what we went through back then will have to be gone through.
That's correct.
Yeah, all right.
And we're putting the departments on notice that, that that may be the case as we're preparing over the next couple of years. So they're doing step-down plans as part of their budget development. That's what we were doing back in 2016, so that we know if we need to pivot. As she indicated, we've got some really big unknowns regarding federal impacts that impact state, and then impact local jurisdictions. And so the timing of those may be a year to two years out, but they're coming.
Thank you. Take your chair.
Supervisor Couch, thank you. It's a great time to take a, take a look at how we're spending all our dollars. Mr. Turnipseed was prudent to raise the homelessness dollars. It's the amount of money we have spent, and the amount of information we have on it is, the disparity is quite profound. So this is an excellent time to do that, and I'm grateful that we'll have Couch's brain on it, frankly. I think that is just good. Good, good, good stuff for the county. Okay, so we're going to move on.
I'll, I'll second his motion.
Supervisor Peters. Excuse me. We have a motion by Supervisor Couch, and a second by Supervisor Peters. Thank you. Sorry to have interrupted you. Can we cast your votes, please, or our votes?
The motion is approved, all eyes.
Thank you so much. Our final item this morning is a feel-good matter. This is a report on the results of the 2024 Kern County CARES canned food drive. Lito's coming down, and he's going to explain to all these young hearts and minds here what are the really, really great actions we take- what, what are the really, really great actions we take to think of ourselves as family and think of our neighbors as family in this community, in particular, those who are very hungry. Lito, thank you, and welcome, the floor is yours.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of board. Liam Morello, your Director for Department of Human Services. I'll make my presentation brief. I'm privileged and honored to be joined by Debbie Powers, who's the Executive Director of the Empire Gleaners. And I'm happy to announce, I'm happy to announce, our goal last year was to exceed 150,000 pounds. We absolutely blew that out of the mark, and the total-
Lito, could you tell these youngsters, what is, what do you mean, 150 pounds of what? And for what reason?
Absolutely. So the Kern County participates in a food drive annually to help out the Kern County Gleaners. And Kern County Gleaners, they're a nonprofit organization. They don't get any state or federal funding. They operate with four paid employees, only everybody else is volunteers. But they service 12,000 residents, providing them food on a regular basis. One of their biggest contributing factors to that exercise is the Kern County Cans Food Drive that we perform on an annual basis.
By county employees?
By county employees, exactly. And I'm happy to say, our goal of 150,000 was far exceeded. Our number for collections last year was 276,000 pounds.
Almost doubled that.
That's 138 tons. That's amazing when you think about it from that perspective. All 27 county departments all pitched in. And I want to really recognize some of those departments. Your board, the CAO, and the clerk of the board absolutely participated in that matter. Aging and Adult Services, Adult Controller, County Clerk Elections, Kern Behavioral Health, Child Support, County Council, Risk Management, General Services, Park and Recreation. Is that Margot waving back there? Kern County Human Resources, DHS, that's a shameless plug, but DHS was there too. Kern County ITS, Probation, Public Health, and Public Works. All these wonderful departments, along with the 27 others that participated, made it happen to make sure we exceeded the goal and reached the 276,000 pounds. I want to kind of share the activities that they had performed. They did everything from Jeans Day, hot cocoa sales, raffle baskets, bake sales, Boo Santa grams, photos with Santa. Those are the creative activities your county departments did to make all this happen. Some departments are actually working on their fundraisers now, getting an early start on 2025. Your Kern County Human Resources are actually doing, or did, Valentine grams. So they just did that recently as an activity, just kick off their activities. Again, this is a year-long process for many departments, and we're happy to say that's why we reached this goal, along with some revisions that the Gleaners did with regards to accepting donations. As I stated earlier, the Gleaners do a wonderful job providing food to our constituents here in this county. It's important to note that food insecurity is a huge issue in this county. One in five children go hungry every night in this county. So when we do things like this, when the county departments come together and county employees pitch in, whether it's monetary donations or cans, canned food drives, it really goes a long way to, to, to make a difference in our community. I want to thank the county departments, the respective coordinators, to make this all happen. I want to recognize our DHS maintenance team and my personal coordinator, Karina Wilson, who I know you're all familiar with, who did an amazing job putting us all together. And I know Debbie Powers has a few things to say as well, so I'll turn it over to Debbie.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Board of Supervisors. Kern County truly cares.
Yay! Thank you for your patience.
And that has never been more evident than during this year's food drive. When Karina Wilson and I visited each department to pick up the donations, the excitement was incredible. Seeing their enthusiasm and generosity firsthand was inspiring. And thanks to your efforts, we didn't just meet our goal, we succeeded it.
Yay!
Yay. Because of you, our shelves are stocked, and we can continue filling daily food baskets with nourishing meals for families, seniors in need. On behalf of the Golden Empire Gleaners, I want to express my deepest gratitude. I also want to take a moment to recognize Karina Wilson, who is not here today, whose dedication and energy helped make this food drive a success each year, year after year. Her passion for rallying the departments and ensuring this initiative thrives is truly remarkable, and it's a pleasure to work with both her and Lito. Thank you for your support, generosity, and the commitment to fighting hunger in Kern County. We are so very grateful, thank you.
Well, Debbie, you're doing God's work over there, and I have been there, and I don't know that there's a, that I've seen a more efficient, streamlined, perfect, really, a perfect, exceptional program with, with four pages down. I really would hope these youngsters would go and observe it. Maybe you can volunteer and see what that system is like, because it is efficient. It is, it's like a private sector operation, if you will, that is really focused on just, on streamlining and, and getting, getting incredible work done in the community. I mean, I really recommend you go see it, because they have a serious operation. It's passionate, it's efficient, and it just feels good to see people working together so collaboratively and so effectively. It's really just, they're remarkable. It's remarkable, and you've been around a long time, Gleaners, not you, but Gleaners. So, you know, we're all youngsters here, but are happy that these folks in the back could get a sense and a glimpse of, of the many pieces of Kern County that make Kern County, right? There's government, there's the public, there's nonprofit, there's private sector, there's lots of, lots of good people. When we come together and collaborate this way with the employees, for example, helping our neighbors, you know, be less hungry and feel more loved from the Kern County family. So, thank you for all you do. Okay, that brings us to the end of our, is that right? Or do we receive and file?
We need to receive and file.
Okay, we need a receive and file motion, gentlemen?
Just one second.
Thank you. Thank you, supervisors, if you would please cast your vote. We have a motion in a second. Thank you again for the food and the TLC to our neighbors.
The motion is approved, four eyes, one absent, Supervisor Flores.
Okay, so upon a motion, we will adjourn to closed session, be back at 2:00. Thank you, David. We're adjourned.